It's an only mode.
Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting for, let's see, March 16th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
All right, thank you. And as most of you know, obviously, we moved everything to today because of usually spring break. So we are just going to go ahead and meet today. I am looking, okay, Yolanda, go ahead and do your, your thing there for the attendees online.
Okay. If you see these four buttons, you can click the orange arrow to open and close the user interface. All attendees' microphones are muted. There are two ways to communicate with the city council. The first is by raising your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The second is to type a question into the question pane in the attendance interface. If you are not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. How to raise your hand? Click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. A member of the staff will call on you by name, by the name you have registered with and will unmute you. In the attending pane, you can ask a question to the city councilor staff members by typing into the question box. Staff will read the question out loud and direct to the appropriate party. Question pane is not visible. If it's not visible, click on the orange arrow to open the attendee pane.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and we'll just plug away here. We are on item four, A, no presentations, four, B, we have to appoint one alternate member to the planning commission, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. Good evening. We do have tonight an appointment of an alternate member to the planning commission for Mr. Rodney Apodaca. He served on planning commission in an alternate capacity since September of 2019. His term expires upcoming on April 9th, but in order to meet our publication or our deadlines, we are reappointing him at this time. His term, if reappointed tonight, would be for an additional four-year term as an alternate member, which would serve from April 10th of 2021 through April 10th of 2025.
Okay, and so he's already an alternate, so I don't see any issues. And we have one still open.
We still have one alternate member vacancy.
Okay, so if anybody's listening and would like to maybe apply for that, then please do so. So with that, council, on the appointment of Mr. Apodaca.
Okay. I move to appoint Rodney Apodaca, an alternate member of the planning commission, four years until April 10th, 2025.
All right, and give him a second.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All right, awesome. Then we will move on to item number five, City Council agenda requests and announcements. I'll start with Ms. Duncan.
I attended the CML executive director meeting. There was no one else on the call. I was just on there. Seeing how things go during this meeting is different from the one that we attend regularly during the week. They just had a lot of questions. They did a survey and they said that 48% of the CML members were not satisfied with the new dial that we have. And they said that 45% leave restrictions. They want them to leave the restrictions where they are. So I don't know, you know, they just did a percentage of, they had a lot of a different surveys that you can do throughout, throughout the meeting, and that was one of them. They wanted to know how was Fountain planning on utilizing the funds that were sent? And I didn't answer because I didn't, you know, again, I was just on there as a participant, not as a board member. They also wanted to know the percentage of people vaccinated in Fountain? And I didn't have those answers either, so it's after the fact. So I didn't have those answers and I didn't answer anything. Because again, I was just as a participant, not as a board member. One of the questions was how was we, how were we going to handle the vacation traffic in Fountain from the tourists in Texas? And so I guess that's something that we can talk about and deal with once that comes up. But I don't know how much, I don't know, do we know if we get, how much tourists we get from, in the Fountain area from Texas or any of the other states that have opened up poorly?
We don't get much.
Yeah, I don't know.
We get a little.
And so they did go through how much it's cost to host a meeting in 2021 and they talked about extensions of restaurant sales and tax revenue, affordable housing in major areas. They also said $50 to $75 million of the money that's getting ready to be received will go towards broadband. And they went through other projects like solar projects, mental health. They said three to five million of those dollars will go to mental health. They will be able to have to use 10 to 15 million for affordable housing, including renting hotels for people experiencing homelessness. And eight to 10 million seed money to adopt policies for permit fees, vacant property, housing clusters, and Habitat for Humanity. So they had a lot of, a lot of what could be done with the money that was being received. They also talked about the gas prices going up and the new fees that are being placed on transportation. So they had a lot of good information. Again, I'm not a board member, but I was just there to get acquainted with what they do during executive board meetings.
Okay, anything else? Okay, yeah, those are interesting, all the stuff they talk about. Yeah, we don't like the dial, but they didn't do anything about it. I mean, they were told we didn't like the dial from the baguette go. And they still used it, so whatever. Thanks for attending and see what it's like. So Sam?
Nothing for me tonight.
Richard?
Nothing for me tonight.
Ms. Estes?
I get my microphone on. I get my microphone on. Couple things. I want to send out a big thank you to Gordon Rick and Mayor Ortega and John Trilch for helping my mom and I get in to get our vaccines. We had our first one today. So I really appreciate all of your help getting us in there to get those taken care of and telling us where to go. Second thing is I have attended the latest round of, I sit on the community advisory panel for the latest round of the PFOS testing that is happening here in the Fountain Valley. And so they're getting ready, they're ramping up to do the next round of testing. And if any of our citizens would like to participate in that study, they can go to the website www.c-o-scope, S-C-O-P-E.org. That's colorado-scope.org. And they, they'll tell you on the website how to get signed up. And if you participated in the study before, you can still participate in this round also. And this study is being conducted from the Colorado University School of Public Health. And so again, go to that website and I'll give that information to John Trilch and see if we can't put it on our Fountain homepage to, so the people can get that information out there. They're a little delayed because of COVID. They had hoped to get this started last fall. So they're hoping to, by the summer, get ramped up and get the testing started. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Thompson?
I'll make up for everybody else's time. Okay, and just to remind people that the Great American Cleanup is coming up, April 24th. There are two locations in Fountain that you can sign up online. You just put in Great American Cleanup. And one is the, I just lost it. The Bird Place Nature Center. One is the nature center that'd be cleaning up, and then there's another location not too far from there. So if you have some time in the morning on April 24th, it's always amazing how much crud that gets picked up at these, at these cleanups. So we could really use some people to come out and help with that. March is Developmental Disabilities Month. And so I would just like to give a shout out to all the families and people that have loved ones that are developmentally disabled and they're helping them get to the best of their abilities. We have a great provider in our community, special kids and special families that I know a lot of our citizens in Fountain go to. And so I'd like to just give them a shout out for all the hard work that they are doing in our community. Some of you may have heard of their original founding place, Zach's Place for Children. They provide respite and care for people up to 22 years. And they also do host home providing for adults with disabilities and behavioral services in English and Spanish. So if you know anybody that has developmental disabilities in their family, there is a resource for you. And thank you so much for all you're doing to help and assist people. CML, I went to a CML sponsored Zoom meeting yesterday with CDPHG. Dial is a popular thing this week, apparently. And we talked about the dial. And the question that they asked people at the meeting was, where should the government open up things sooner rather than later? They got a lot of great participation from the elected officials on the call. A lot of people really concerned about if they are in an area where they do have high tourism up in the mountains and different places. You know, basically saying, we can't, we can't necessarily survive another summer of this, so we need to figure it out. So I think there's possibly going to be some changes coming by the end of the week or next week. Look for an announcement, those, those famous Friday afternoon at four o'clock announcements for some changes on the dial. And the, the people were talking about the number one place is outdoor venues, event centers such as wedding. People have put them off and they really need those places opened back up. And I brought up senior centers and congregant meal places that there is no framework provided or any timeline for those places to open up. So they can even have a goal to work towards. So they need a framework for that and a timeline. At the end of the call, the guy made the mistake of saying, hey, if anybody wants to stay on an extra minute, I'll be able to listen to you. So I stayed on an extra minute. And I addressed the elephant in the room. I basically said, when is the governor going to give up his executive emergency powers and take us off the dial? Where is the framework and where is the plan? We're far enough along in this pandemic and we've been dealing with it and everybody's been doing great stuff. And we want to hear what his plan is to release those powers and give back to, give things back to local control. And, and as long as we're on the dial, we're not out of it. So we want to, we want to see him start coming up with a plan and a framework on how he's going to get rid of that dial. Governor, Commissioner Lahinos hit me up yesterday, I think it was, to ask me to remind people that the county is giving a rebate for restaurants, can apply for it. And they have $4 million available for that and they've only given out one. So if you're a restaurant and you're paying that 1% tax or fee to the county, then you may be eligible for a rebate of that. And you need to make contact with the county and see if you can get that back because not a lot of people are applying for that and the money's just sitting there. The MAMsit project, the military project that's going on down here, just want to let everybody know. It looks like in the end of spring or summer, they'll be starting up at exit 135 work up at the Academy exit. And then at the beginning of summer, the Charter Oak Ranch Road branch part of that will be beginning. So we will see impacts from that. I apologize to everybody in advance for fighting so hard to get that down here. But it is necessary in our community to get those edges of the freeway widened for our emergency services to get off the freeway, get a better flow of traffic on Academy and get the gate 19 gate open. So we can get some, hopefully pull some of that traffic off there also. So we will see those impacts, but it's going to be, what do you call it, Todd? Short-term pain for long-term gain. All right. And we had a fantastic meeting today with Neil Normstein, who is now the assistant with Representative Lambourne. And we had everybody in the room, a lot of department heads, and we had a fantastic conversation with him about what's going on in Fountain, what are some needs and how can Representative Lambourne represent us a little bit better at the federal level and what he can do to assist us. And I thought it was a great conversation. We learned stuff. He learned a lot of stuff. And he is going to be a great resource for our community while he's in that position because he's been around. He was a commissioner in Teller County for years and he's going to be a great asset for us and resource for our community to have a good relationship with. So thank you.
All right. I don't have anything tonight. So we'll just go ahead and keep moving forward. The only other thing actually is on the 31st is the, our first strategic plan meeting. Is that correct? Is it the 31st or the 30th?
31st.
31st, okay. Oh, yeah. So we haven't, sorry, I'll take that back. We haven't officially approved that yet, but it's coming. So I have nothing on that. City, item number five is public to be heard. Citizens may address council items that are not on our agenda. We ask to email your questions to the city clerk prior to the meeting. Council may not be able to provide a immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up and out of respect for council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, and right now, not seeing anybody from in here or online for public. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. All items listed under consent are considered to be routine, I was trying to turn my camera, considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case item may be removed from our consent agenda and consider separately at the discretion of council. We have items A, B, C, D, and E. What would council like to do? Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we'll motion in second for approval of our consent agenda. Ms. Huffman?
Vote.
Yes?
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. I know there are a couple of people here for some of the items on consent. You're all good. We're ready to go for your next step. So thank you for showing up, just in case. And we'll go ahead and move on. Past item eight, no old business. Item nine, new business. We have nothing taken off from consent agenda, so we move right into item nine B. Resolution number, resolution number 21-011, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2021 budgeted funds. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor, council. As you know, we adopted the budget back in December 9th. And at that time, we did not have final numbers for 2020 capital expenditures. And so we, we now have those numbers. And so we're therefore recommending a formal, formal approval by city council of those capital items that were budgeted in 2020. But we did not spend the dollars in 2020 because we didn't finish those projects until late 2020 or early 2021. So we're now asking that those unspent dollars in 2020 be, for the capital projects, be forwarded to 2021 and approved to be added to the 2021 budget. This carryover budget amendment process is a standard process and best practice according to Government Finance Officers Association for ensuring that capital projects spanning more than one budgetary period are continued and efficiently completed. Because our, our budgets, for those that are listening and that don't know, our budgets are only year to year. So, so anything that is unspent capital-wise has to be carried over to the next year. So this carryover budget, and we can, I think we've got Exhibit A on there. We want to move this slide forward. Next slide, please. There we go. Difficult to read there, but in total, we have $2,474,300 in general fund carryovers. Large part of that is the Aga Park concession restroom building of $274,000. And $200,000 of that is coming out of the committed funds in the park reserve. We have a fire engine and ladder truck purchase of $1,691,000, $1,000,000 of which is coming out of the assigned Public Safety Capital Improvements Reserve Fund. In the water fund, we have a total of $1,141,150 of capital carryforwards. In the electric fund, $8,975,140. A lot of what you still see in the water and the electric funds are additional funds for transmission lines, Jimmie Camp, you know, the wrap-up and, and finish of the joint utilities operation and the Aga Park treatment facility. So, so those are ongoing expenditures that we need to add to the 2021 budget. Conservation Trust Fund, the Adams Open Space Bridge Repair of $161,000 is being carried forward as well as $50,000 of playground service at Lyndhamood Park. Total there is $211,090. Streets Capital Improvement Fund, the remaining funds that we have on that is $1,2,720 of those moving Fountain Forward Funds. So that, that's for, going to be transferred over to be used in 2021 for the Indiana Avenue improvements. That project has been delayed due to the VNSF Railroad. Final item is Public Transportation Fund of $86,000 for bus shelter improvements that we now have a grant to add to that, which I'll get to in just a minute. In addition, staff is now aware of certain required 2021 expenditures that were not included in the 2021 budget for a variety of reasons. And that includes, but not limited to, non-capital items that were previously appropriated. Replacing hail-damaged assets, for example, additional EMT firefighter, Streets Department building renovations and street plows, Sanders, and lease trucks. You know, we had budgeted for leasing the plows in Sanders along with the leased trucks. But the plows in Sanders last quite a bit longer. It's much more efficient to purchase those outright and just lease the truck separately. So that's why we're asking for additional money there. The Parks Building, Phase One of the skate park, which eventually will be $600,000, but we're doing $200,000 now. And we have $120,000 of grant-funded bus shelters, the additional $120,000 of grant revenue coming in. So, and, and we also have some street resurfacing additions because we only had $200,000 that was initially budgeted there. And we have a little over $500,000 of revenue, some expenses and money that's paid back to FURA. But we certainly have a lot more than $200,000 that can be spent on street resurfacing. So the additional first supplemental budget request for 2021 includes $1,164,000, $10,000 for general fund, $40,000 of Conservation Trust Fund dollars to come out of reserves, $30,500 to come out of reserves from the Volunteer Fire Fund, 100, well, nothing to come out of the Public Transportation Fund since we have that grant of $120,000, but we need your approval to spend the $120,000 that we receive in the grant and then an additional $225,000 for street resurfacing. So with all of that, pending any questions, I would ask for your approval for Resolution 21-011, which adds the capital carryforwards and the additional supplemental request to the 2021 budget.
All right, questions for John? Really, a lot of this should be no surprises. We've been talking a lot about this for quite some time. And it's not anything that is sudden.
Right.
So I'm not seeing any names online either. Any questions from public? Okay, seeing no questions. How would council like to proceed with this item? Ms. Duncan?
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-011.
All right, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Next is item 9C. It's a presentation to update the city council regarding a citywide single trash hauler initiative. And it says Troy is here. And there he is. So before he gets started, I do want to address some things because we had it posted on yesterday's Facebook that we're going to start the public process and public meetings early April. We have two meetings scheduled with the public. And so what I can tell you what it is not, it is, there, there are no kickbacks. There's nothing special that the city council is getting for this. There's all the, the, the things that were on there that people think they know, they don't. And so what I can tell you is this has been a process that's been going on for some time. It was put on hold because of COVID. And really, it just got stalled because of COVID. It was not, we just, we're dealing with bigger issues that had to be dealt with. We want to start this process back up. We have a lot of people who complain about our roads, even though they don't want to vote for a little bit of taxes to, to fix the roads. So we're looking at ways we can mitigate the damage to our roads, and this would be one of them. We want to do this if it's going to save the taxpayers' money. We're not going to do it because we owe someone something for fixing a road that they destroyed in the first place. What else is this not? That, there's a lot of misconceptions out there. And just, just so you know, I'm telling you to your faces now that this is a legit process that we're going through. We want the public involved. I've heard from a lot of people who think that we should have been doing this a long time ago. I know a lot of new people come in, you know, Ms. Thompson talks about this a lot, when new people move in and they, they wonder who is our trash service and are sometimes amazed that there are so many trash services because where they come from, it's one and done and that's it. Oftentimes cities just take care of it, but here we don't. So there's a lot of thought gone into this and, and knowing it's getting special kickbacks, it's a fair process. It's going to be fair to every single service. If you have a loyalty to a trash company, don't ask why, but you can stick with that company if you'd like. And so that's going to be talked about as well. But it's, again, this is an idea that's been thrown out to help mitigate the damage to our roads that nobody wants to pay for. So I'll let Troy go ahead and take it from here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. That was a great introduction and kind of a lot of what I was going to start off with.
Oh, sorry.
So that's wonderful. So that's wonderful. That's exactly right. We're, how I would describe it is right now, we're at the, we're still in the research phase of this idea. And we've been researching it for a couple of years now. It is a big idea. It is a big change to how we do things here in the city. But I will also say if this was an idea that, that if, if we had gone through the research and it, and it didn't pencil out and it didn't work, we wouldn't be here right now. And so if along any of the stages of this idea, it becomes something where the numbers don't make sense, it's not penciling out for, for the haulers, for the community, then, then the idea will kind of go away naturally. If it doesn't make sense to do, it's not going to continue going. And so, you know, I think I would say that by the kind of very nature that we're here tonight talking about it means that, that at this stage, as we go through it, it's still an idea that, that makes a lot of sense, at least to the staff. And so just to kind of give a quick summary, the, the idea was proposed a while back. We had done a lot of research. We had one big public meeting. Many people were there. We had a good turnout. And we listened to a lot of the feedback. We, we got a lot of questions. Some questions we had answers for, other questions we didn't have answers for. The biggest question being, well, how much is it going to cost? And so our commitment to the community and to the, to the council was to go look into the numbers and to go answer some of, of the other questions that we received. And that's what we went and did. And so that's kind of what I wanted to give council an update of tonight, and, and that's kind of the next phase. So, so to kind of go through what we've been going through, the problem is we've got a lot of trash haulers in this city. We've got Waste Connections, they go basically drive on every, every city street in the neighborhood. We've got Best Way Disposal, except Best Way just sold to GFL. And then we've got, who else do we got in this? Well, we had Springs Waste and then they sold to Waste Connections. And then we've got Waste Management on our roads. And then we've got Waste Systems, Ink on our roads. And then we had Rocky Mountain Disposal on the road, but they sold to HBS. And so you can kind of tell that there's a lot going on with trash haulers in the city. And, and really the problem, this could be anybody's cul-de-sac in the city. The problem is that we've got these heavy trash trucks. And, and I think the mayor touched on it too, is that, you know, we can look at a lot of different reasons. We can point a lot of different fingers for the quality of our roads. We all drive them. And there's a lot of reasons they're damaged. And so I don't want the perception to be that, that the damage for the roads is because of the trash haulers. There are many reasons and, and a lot of those reasons may exist on our side historically. On the city maybe made, didn't make great decisions years and years ago about holding construction to a certain standard, right? And so, but we have to make decisions that are right moving forward for the city too. And the reality is, is having all these trucks on the city streets is really causing damage because these heavy trucks, Yolanda, one more click. Well, so this is, this is a picture. This is the average cul-de-sac. The math works out, an average cul-de-sac like this should have about 224 passenger trips a week. With this many houses, but instead what you're seeing is trash trucks, the research shows that, that one heavy truck equals about 1,300 passenger trips. So that's one car, the damage that one car does is about equal to 1,300 passenger trips of a heavy truck. And so what you see is those, all those black, all those colored boxes represent trash cans. Just about every day when I walk outside, there's a different colored trash can in my cul-de-sac. And that's the damage that each one of those trucks are doing to that road. And, and so that's, that's the minimum. Some estimates are as high as 9,300 passenger trips. And, and so maximum, if they're really heavy, that's 55,800 passenger trips a week. And then of course, double that when you talk about recycling. And so those are on the minimum and maximum. That's how many passenger trips a week and damage that it's doing to basically every road in our city. And that's concerning because it's, and it's not only about the, the damage to the road. It's about the, the noise pollution that you hear. Many of us are staying home more and you hear those tracks, those trucks every single day. It's about environmental pollution as well. And so, so part of this idea was, was born out of the idea of trying to limit the amount of these trucks on the road. Okay, Yolanda? So let's cut to the chase. That's what, this is what everybody's, what, what everybody's interested in is how much is it going to cost us? And so what we did is we went and got an RFP late 2019. And we had all the haulers that serviced the Fountain Valley and, and one on Fort Carson bid for us what it would cost them to serve the entire community of Fountain if they were to have all the, all of the residences. And this is what they came up with. There were a few different, there were some ranges. They were all pretty close and competitive with each other. And we were able to negotiate the prices. And it ended up being for a single trash can service, so that's one trash can a week. It ended up being about $10 to $14 a month. And then we did, what we did is we went on and surveyed people in the Fountain area for what they're currently paying. And we found for a single can, those are 96 gallon cans. People in Fountain pay about $18 to $22 a month. And so you can see what a significant savings that would be. And then, and then the numbers are similar if you include recycling. You know, 16 to 23 is what the ranges were based on the RFP. And then 21 to 33 a month, if you include recycling for what people are paying now. And keep in mind, what the, the haulers bid on was providing the service with an included infrastructure fee. So wrapped into that $10 to $14 a month or 16 to 23, if you include recycling, is a fee that would come back to pay for the damage that those trucks are doing to the city roads. And so that hauler would pay into that, that infrastructure fee that we would then in turn use to improve the quality of the roads. So we had our first community meeting, the big meeting. There, there was a lot of opposition, some people that, that didn't understand the idea. And, and we were just trying to learn, as we still are, trying to learn what's important to people, how to best structure the, the program. And some things we learned, some of the pros that, that came out of that meeting were obviously reduction of damage to the city streets. Obviously the environmental impact, I've talked about those two things. It would allow more opportunity, more availability for people to recycle. Obviously the, the nuisance, the, the noise pollution, the having to get stuck behind trash trucks every morning, those kinds of things. And, and one kind of hot topic was the, sort of the, the competition, the market. You know, some people said, well, if you choose one hauler, you're eliminating competition in the marketplace. And in reality, what we saw was, in fact, what we're doing is forcing the competition. You know, when I first moved here, I didn't know who to call. I didn't call six or seven trash haulers to get the best rate. I just looked at my neighbor, saw his cans and called that person, figured that was a reasonable rate and got trash. This way, we're actually forcing all of the haulers that operate in the area to give us their absolute best price. And so we're sort of negotiating on behalf of all 35,000 residents or however many live here and getting every single person the absolute best price. And we're doing the, basically doing the negotiation for our residents. And then obviously that fee that comes back into the infrastructure, you know, these trucks, even though we would be limiting the amount of them on the roads, they're still doing damage. And so we would force them to pay into fixing the infrastructure. And then there, there are the cons. People don't like change. People have some loyalties to their companies. You know, and, and sort of the logic of the idea is if we pick one hauler, that means six of them don't win. And, and, and that's a potential business impact. And then the perception of removal of choice, and I think the mayor touched on that one. What basically you'd be able to hire your own trash company. The difference would be they would have to pay an extra infrastructure fee to be able to operate in the city. And so, so the, the sort of, the conclusion of that would be you can pick your own trash company. It's just going to cost you a little bit more. So how do, how do we get there and where have we gone and where have we, where are we going after this? So in, in 2018, the roadway focus group kind of came up with the idea. They're a citizen led group that, that focuses on city streets and they came up with the idea. And so between 2018 and 2019, we kind of developed the idea. We did research, we talked to other communities and, and tried to sort of come up with a more concrete idea of what it would look like. And then we had our community meeting. People came in and gave their opinions and asked questions and really helped us sort of firm up the idea with the one question being, what are the numbers? And so we went out after that community meeting, did the RFP, the Request for Proposals and got numbers from trash haulers. And then we had these, these sort of, these numbers in early 2020. And the council got sort of wind of those numbers. And then everybody kind of knows what happened is COVID hit. And, you know, and it did stall us a little bit. And as you saw in that map slide, we had some significant changes to the trash haulers in Fountain. And so kind of the reality is it makes sense to go back and get more accurate numbers at this point. That, that, that RFP in 2019 may not be as reliable or as accurate. And, and the kind of the business climate has changed. And so as we sit now, that, that RFP serves to give us really accurate data that's a good estimate for what we can consider the, the program would look like. So those aren't exact numbers, but hopefully it's what we can expect. And so what, where we go next is, is this is, this is something, you know, that I've said, not a whole lot of what the city council does affects every single person in the city of Fountain. But this, this is going to be one of them, but this could affect every single person that lives here. And so really what we want is to get a lot of public input. That is what we are really after is, is trying to answer, answer questions, formulate this concept so that people understand it, that we understand it, that people can, can bring concerns and that we can really have a firm grasp of what we want to do. And so we just need lots of public engagement. And so this is kind of the, the first next step of doing that. And our plan is to have two hybrid meetings, one on April 5th and one on April 9th. Those will be hybrid meetings. So they'll be very similar to the meeting that's happening right now. We have limited availability, obviously in person. So we're asking people that want to be present in person to RSVP. And then obviously you can, you can do it from home and engage in the meeting and, and type in comment questions and we'll answer those. But we just want to hear from the public. We just want to hear from people. And so we, we schedule two meetings. That way hopefully everybody that wants to be in person can be. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to limit the, the accessibility of this and we want to take our time and get it right. And then in between those two hybrid meetings and then May 12th, it's basically going to be an open period of comment. And so we're going to, we're going to post those, those meetings. So you can view those, they'll be basically be webinars. And so anyone can view those webinars in that, that month, that's five, six weeks and send in their comments, send in their questions. So you don't, you don't necessarily have to be present at those meetings to engage. So if you've got questions, if you've got issues, go on the website, submit your questions. And then on May 12th, we'll have a completely virtual session that will then be able to answer those questions. And hopefully the idea is that, that we really firm up the concept, that we get the details down. And we have sort of an idea that's been, that's been molded by the public. And then depending on how that goes, you know, then, excuse me, then we can come back to the council and present steps moving forward. So that's, that's the schedule going forward for public comment. Right now, you know, all this, this information about these meetings is on our website. Also on our website is what we've been calling the feasibility study. And so all the things that I've been talking about tonight are very detailed in that study. So I would, I would direct anybody who's interested to that feasibility study. It talks about rates, tons of frequently asked questions, pros, cons. That's a lot of great information. And so I would encourage you to check out that feasibility study and then be ready for our hybrid community meetings on either April 5th or April 9th. So, so hopefully for those members of the public watching, that you'll, that you'll check out that study and either RSVP or be present at, at one of those two first meetings. And we're hoping for just a lot of public engagement. So sorry for that kind of long-winded presentation, but that's all that I had. Any questions?
No, so at, at this point, the, the, the real meet of it's going to start on, in April. At those two meetings, you don't have to come to both.
Correct. They'll, they'll basically be the same meeting.
Yeah, it'll be the same meeting. So if you can only make one, you're not going to miss anything unless you want to attend both. Because sure, sometimes a topic will take off on one meeting versus another. So I do appreciate that. And then there's that open ended time between the two meetings and in May that things joggle your mind or whatever, and you want to add to the conversation. You are certainly welcome to do that. Again, we have not made any decisions on this other than we want to explore it. This is again, one of the many avenues in mitigation for our roads. That road focus group is working, they've worked tirelessly on just, you know, trying to figure out what we can do. The, the tax initiative, what, a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, they, that was kind of the, the meat of their, their meetings, but they, that wasn't the only focus. They were looking at a bunch of other different things. It's a, how can we better service our roads? Knowing that, you know, we have a limited amount of dollars that are coming into our roads and our systems. And I know Councilman Applegate sits on that committee and has been a big help with that as well. So, you know, we will keep pushing at it. This isn't our only solution. As Troy said, it's not only the tracks, trash trucks have created these issues. There are things that, yeah, like you said, we own up to, we've been working on and fixing. There are other places we know we can point to that we're, we're looking at as well. So it's, it's a global thing. We're not just here picking on garbage companies. And, and the funny thing is, is one of these companies was really against it. And, and they also put in, and from what I understand, they were actually a pretty reasonable look at as well. So, you know, and then they end up selling anyway. So the big companies are buying out the little ones and that has nothing to do with us. So just realize that's, that's a part of business. And if I can sell my little mom and pop for a lot of money, guess what? So, okay, thank you. And we look forward to moving forward with that issue. And I think there's really no questions, right?
I just have one question, and I don't even know if this is possible or not. But since we are going to be so limited in attendance to the people that can be in the room.
Yeah.
Is there a way to limit that to Fountain residents? Because, you know, there's a lot of interest in the community, but it's our residents who are the ones that are going to be directly affected by it. Because, you know, there's a lot of interest in the community, but it's our residents who are the ones that are going to be directly affected by it. Is there a way to limit the in-person? Of course, obviously anybody can come online, right? But, you know, the people that really want to be in attendance that are residents or possibly at a truck hauler, you know? I just remember sometimes when we've had different things that are a little concerning the community, you get a lot of people from the outside and there's hardly room for the citizens to, to get in the room.
Legally, can we do that? I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, this, this is something that just affects the Fountain residents. So I would, I think, you know,
I mean, it could be just something as simple when they're trying to sign up is, are you a Fountain resident? And we're just trying to limit the limited amount of space we have to people who live in the city and will be directly affected. If, if they lie about it on the question, I mean, it's
Yeah, it needs a brief priority. Here's what's going to happen.
Yeah.
And you know. Well, I pay my mom's bill and I don't live in the city. So, I mean, we'll have those types of things.
Right, I understand that.
But I think we should make it a priority as much as possible, but it is still a public meeting.
Right. And we, we could just ask and just say, you know, it's limited attendance. If, if you're not, or, you know, directly affected. Yeah. If you're paying it for someone else, you're directly affected.
And if you're one of the businesses, you're directly affected.
Yes, right.
We want them to participate as well.
Well, except that this is only for residential, but.
We are doing an RSVP so we can ask it and make that statement. Hey, we're trying to focus and we'll see if people, you know.
Yeah. If you just want to attend because you're just curious about the process and what's going on, please attend online, you know, and save the space for the Fountain residents. Or ones that are directly involved in paying for someone.
So I think as we go, we'll, we'll get a feel for that as people start to RSVP. And, and I think that's a, that's something to look into.
And Mayor, I wanted to comment, one thing we're going to do right now, when we put things out on Facebook and those kind of following the direction, we're not engaging in the ins and outs. But once we go to this kind of official comment period, we will be engaging on, at that point and answering those specific questions. We've done that when we've used this system before. So rather than jumping on with, with all the social media junk, we will have that going back and forth once we start this process.
And that, that'll be in a, in a, where would, where is that going to occur?
We, we basically have done that for some of the public comments that we've had to do during COVID for some of the projects. So we'll use that same system. And it's been very successful, you know, the answer question, we'll get on, answer that specific question, so on and so forth.
Yeah. Cause my concern is on social media, then it becomes just someone's soapbox and then someone wants to fight back at them and
Correct.
And so nothing is ever truly done, other than a lot of armchair experts that really aren't. So if we can avoid that as much as possible, I think that would be
We will.
Good.
Yeah. So the, the best way to get public input is the website. So go to the website and that's where you should give your official comments. That's going to be the best way to communicate.
And so will there be opportunities? So I have a question or I have a comment on this, I'm going to post it on that City of Fountain website. Others will be able to see that, not just staff, but like others in public can
Correct.
Go see what everybody else has posted and, hey, yeah, I think that too, or, or those types of things. I think it would be worthy because I don't, then, just like what Richard said, then someone would just jump in and say, yeah, I agree with that, rather than, you know, I, you, you're going to have 30 of the same comments because they can't see what they're doing.
And that's what we're not going to do. We're not going to do the, the, you know, just outlandish comments. If somebody has a question, we'll get on there and answer that specific question.
Right.
And not allow all the other stuff.
Yeah.
That goes on on social media. Just question, answer, question, answer, question, answer.
Okay.
Not until after the first meeting. Yeah. But I want to reiterate what Troy said. If we didn't find those numbers, you know, we've, we've explained to everybody every time we get a chance, this is just a research process right now. We're just, it's our responsibility to go out and find opportunities and find different options for the citizens and the elected officials to look at. And that's all we're doing. But if it doesn't come out where the numbers make sense and people get savings and those type of things, well, then we'll come back to you with those results. But there's no decisions been made. We're just still researching.
And so another question that has come up, do we have any local businesses that are in garbage?
We know of one in the Fountain Valley now, Waste Systems. And I've spoken to that owner. I spoke to him yesterday. He did, he was involved the last time and he did put in a, an RFP.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I explained to him yesterday, we're hoping he does that again. But we just have one local now, actually not just in the Fountain Valley, but in the whole region. Everybody else, as far as we know now, is all national companies.
Okay. And, and then the other part, I think for people to understand or know, not understand, but to know is that we do have a kind of a preferential ranking for those who are local. So to give them, not an advantage, but give them, uh, how do we want to say that?
Priority. I mean, we have it.
In the, the, the RFP, there's a ranking system, a point system, and there's points allocated.
So you get some bonus points for being local. And so it does help those who are local, but right now it sounds like we only have one that would be worried about it anyway. So, okay. Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to the conversation to see what happens. And, and as we, guys, this is just an informational, what? Okay. Okay. So at that point, I'm going to go ahead and move forward. Thank you. And again, I look forward to the conversation and, and see how we go from there. Thanks, Troy. All right. Item number 10, correspondence, comments, and ex officer reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Trainer. Anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Thompson had a couple of my items, so I won't hit on those again. But wanted to mention the five-star program continues to move forward, although to date, we still have only had one business in Fountain take advantage of that. And I suspect that it's going to be fewer and fewer businesses region-wide, just as we move out of that dial. And then the other one, one thing I want to mention is that we, we are close to having almost all of our city employees vaccinated, who, who have elected to be vaccinated. We're still a few short, but we're almost to, to all of our employees doing that. Again, who wanted to be? Just wanted to share that with you. Oh, one last thing. Stimulus funds. We have, we've been told that the number that will be potentially coming to Fountain was, is approximately 6.6 million. And there are a number of seminars that we have finance staff attending to figure out, wait a minute, what's actually eligible for that? And we'll be having conversations around the strategic plan. What does the community want to spend? What's the council want to do with our strategic plan? And how, how can we work those stimulus funds into that? So I just wanted to share that briefly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Evans, good to see you.
Good to be back. Good to see you. Good to be out of COVID prison. I don't have
COVID prison. That's exactly what it is. Commander Lewis. Okay, Chief Maxon I saw was on. Do you have anything, sir? Was he good?
I don't. Hope everybody's doing well.
Chief, let me see what else I have here. IT? Anything from IT?
Nothing to add tonight.
Oh, Lisa, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Nothing to add tonight.
Okay, thanks. Troy, anything tonight? Sorry, I should have came back to you. Mr. Trilch?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just two things to add to the conversation on single hauler. And just point out where on the website you can find that information. It's right on the main page. We did a news article about it. You'll see an icon there referring to the single hauler concept. And you can go into that article. It has the link to register for the, for one of the two hybrid sessions. It has the link for the initial feasibility study. It has a link for the flyer. So you can download that and print it and give it to your neighbors if you'd like. And once we get the, the presentation and feedback mechanism in place, it'll, it'll go right in there as well. Right on the main page, very easy to, to find. So second thing is, is council approved on consent this evening, the strategic planning session on March 31st, Mayor, that you mentioned at the beginning of the, of the meeting. So looking forward to that. That will also be a hybrid meeting setup. So we'll also have the opportunity for public to register and listen in and participate in that virtually. So more information to follow about that session. Pending anyone's questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trilch. Ms. Huffman? Anything from IT? Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with Ms. Duncan. Anything further?
I did see that New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church is having a vaccination, a COVID-17 vax clinic on Saturday, March 27. And the second dose is on Saturday, April the 24th, from 12 to 4:00. And that's for anyone 18 and above. And you do have to have an appointment. They do have some walk-ins, but their phone number is 719-390-5012.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I was wondering, Scott was talking about what he can do with the money and everything. I was watching the mayor of Fresno today on TV. And he's planning on using the money on fixing roads and the homeless on the streets and a bunch of other projects that they're behind on. And there may be some pretty loose standards for what you can do with that money then. Cause I was kind of surprised at that.
I've heard, I've heard the same thing, but we just wanted to make sure that we're going straight to the source. Yeah. Make sure we know exactly what we can do with it.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Estes?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Nothing further tonight. Thanks.
Ms. Thompson? Okay. And again, I moved through that last item mainly because we have public comment time coming and I don't want to unfairly allow or not, the, the people who have had a lot of comments online, which I normally don't read those because I just get tired of it, but I got looped into it yesterday. I don't want them to feel like they, they were left out of a meeting that they had an opportunity to, to come and, and give comments when that wasn't previously stated for tonight's meeting. So tonight was just purely informational that this is the, the way we're going. And just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. I do want to implore everyone who, who's going to attend that to come with an open mind, to come with actions that, that aren't, you better just not do this because I'm not going to vote for you type of thing. People put themselves out there and, and use a lot of time, the personal time to do things like this to try and better their community. And when you threaten, you know, all these things because it's not going to go your way, that's exactly the part of the world that we're trying to stay away from here. And so come with an open mind, come with a, you know, good ideas. And if you think you have a better idea, then put it out there. We're always open to anything and everything. And, and, you know, this is, this is meant to be a public process, not shut it down because I don't like it. So please understand that this is a lot of work going into this and, and not just by one person or, or a company. This is done in the betterment of our community for our citizens. So with that, again, we don't have a meeting next week. Our next meeting will be our strategic plan update, kind of revamp for the next go-round on March 31st. Our next regular council meeting is April 13th, 2021. We are adjourned.